This meeting of the Margate Planning Board is hereby called to order. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Tom Collins. Clem Wasleski. Richard Patterson.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi.
Here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Guber Nalti.
Here.
Craig Pomisano.
Here.
Stephen Giasecki.
Here.
Remy Pelosi.
Here.
Here.
Joseph D. Geralamo.
Here.
Ron Grupa. Michael Richmond.
Here.
This electronic meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. And all rules and procedures which govern a regular meeting shall govern this meeting as well. Our goal is to have this electronic meeting run smoothly and as close to a normal meeting as possible. By joining this meeting, you have agreed to allow your activity to become a part of the public record. The platform will be muted only during portions of the meeting where there is no public comment. During the public comment portions of the meeting, please mute yourself when not speaking, so as to give other participants their right to be heard and to keep a proper record at the proceedings. If you want to speak, you must first state your name and ask to be recognized by me. Once recognized and sworn in, you may make your comments in accordance with the public decorum protocols. Only one meeting attendee or a member of the public may speak at a time and only after stating your name and being recognized. When not speaking, please place your device on mute so you don't interrupt another speaker or the public meeting. Please speak clearly to avoid background noise. Please isolate yourself as much as possible to ensure there is no unnecessary background audio coming through your device. If there is excess, excessive audio coming through your device, or if you fail to observe public decorum protocols, the host shall identify such and your device may be muted to ensure there are no disruptions. Please be advised that the board reserves the right to disconnect any member of the public who does not observe proper rules of honor. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of the minutes for the meeting of September 4th, 2020.
Make that motion.
I'll second that motion. It's John.
All favor? Aye.
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 And all opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of decisions and resolutions. Number 38, 2020. Oberon LLC. Number 39, 2020. Kimberly Forte. And number 40, 2020. Roman Rosinski. Now hear a motion.
Make that motion.
I'll make, I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. First case is Davco Construction, Inc., 15 North Thurlow Avenue, Lot 220, Lot 1, located in the S-40 district. Seeking sea variance relief for front yard setbacks, third floor deck, full fence, and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McCarnan, will you be sworn in, please?
Mr. McCarnan, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chairman. My report is dated originally September 22nd, 2020, and revised October 27th, 2020, in regard to Davco Construction, 15 North Thurlow Avenue, Lot 220, Lot 1.01, in the S-40 zone. It's the AE elevation 9, according to the effective firm. And it's a hardship variance and a substantial benefit variance. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances. I just want to also remind everybody, this is a continuation of the last hearing where they tabled the application. They made some revisions to comply with a third floor definition, so that variance is removed, eliminated. So the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of City of Margate in order to construct a new flood-compliant dwelling in the City of Margate. The lot is part of a subdivided lot that was recently received approval as a byright subdivision. The lot was not subdivided equally, which is not required, and the wider lot is the interior lot. The revised plans show provide a compliant third floor as per the definitions. The variances are identified as commented on below. Page 2 is the zoning chart for the S-40 zone. The original has highlighted areas for the variance, whether it's yes or no. Documents reviewed on page 3, including the revised plan submitted by Mr. John Obelenus. There is one waiver request, that's a copy of an area map showing all lots within 200 feet of the property. As typical of this type of application, that is not required. And they did submit a 200-foot property list for notification. So the variances required are as follows. Front yard setback to the building on Winchester Avenue, whereas the prevailing setback is 11.3 feet and the proposed setback is 7 feet. That's per Schedule B-1. Front yard setback to the fence, whereas prevailing setback is 11.3 feet and the proposed setback is 2 feet. Side yard setback to the principal structure, whereas the minimum side yard setback is 8 feet and a proposed setback to the outdoor kitchen, which by definition is attached to the principal structure and therefore part of the principal structure. And the setback is measured to that, is 4 feet. And again, it's not a very large, it's not like the whole structure is 4 feet away, it's just the outdoor kitchen, the end of it. Fourth variance and a final variance is pool clearance, whereas the minimum required clearance of any structure is 3 feet and 1 foot is proposed. It's my understanding that the applicant would be willing to move the fence back to be in compliance with the front yard setback request at 7 feet. So we're, the city would be gaining 5 feet of that fence being pushed back. Also, the pool clearance, it's my understanding that the applicant may be agreeable to complying with a 3-foot setback on the pool. Again, their testimony will discuss all four items that they're asking for. The other comments are, I already discussed a waiver. Required front yard setbacks, although the porch and the second floor porch or deck are not being met, they are not to be included with any setback calculations in the future. The required front yard setbacks to the deck is not being met based on the calculated prevailing setbacks, and again, it's based on one other property. The minimum side yard setbacks are being met and exceeded except for the outdoor kitchen. The combined side yard setbacks are being met and are actually being exceeded. The front yard setback variance requested offense is out of place and unjustified per land use ordinance. And again, I think the applicant is willing to work with the board on that and eliminate that variance. Discuss the pool clearance before. The landscape wall has no dimensions, elevations, and again, if they eliminate that variance, that is not required. The required landscaping and shrub count shall be met and will be a condition of approval. Pool equipment is, location is not shown on the plans. I think they plan on putting it in the, on a raised platform in the garage. Again, that'll be under the testimony. And item 13, I had the exterior wall on Winchester Avenue, looks like a solid wall. They did add windows on the ground floor, they added a fireplace bump out. I think the architectural relief provided is more in line with what the board is looking for on the second front yard of the, of the property. Again, the recommendations are in my report and they have to follow and provide the C-1 and C-2 criteria for both, for all the variances requested. Again, they, they shall install the street trees and the governor strip and they are going to be, meet the requirements and the ordinance. That concludes my report at this time.
Roger?
Yes, sir.
Is there no third floor deck variance?
No, I didn't see the.
There's no floor for the deck?
There is no third floor deck. I think the third floor deck was actually the third floor not meeting.
Okay. Okay. Margaret Guber Nalti is recused from this case. Eric Goldstein?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicant Davco Construction, Inc. Just by way of follow-up to Mr. McCarnan's report. Over the past month or so, since we were here last, the applicant has revised the plans to meet the city's requirement for the third floor and Mr. McCarnan has been good enough to make a revision that he submitted well in advance of tonight's hearing to clarify Mr. McCarnan's request for the third floor, which now, as Ms. McCarnan points out, complies. More importantly, however, initially when this application was submitted, perhaps it was a bit aggressive with regard to the lot itself. Meeting table as a representative of Davco was fairly concerned about the plans as they were submitted and he directed Mr. Obelenus to make some revisions as well. Further revisions were made, and Mr. McCarnan is correct, that the pool clearance variance along with the fence towards Winchester all being removed. The variances we're seeking tonight are the front yard on Winchester and the side yard for the outdoor kitchen, which, as Mr. McCarnan points out, is a structure, it does have an attachment to the house. Although there's some interpretation, I suppose, that can get in the way, that the outdoor kitchen itself is not a part of the principal structure. But again, Mr. DiLannardo, being a corporate citizen who wants to do right by Margate, is going forward with the application with those two variances, notwithstanding the fact that potentially one of them may not be a variant. As Mr. McCarnan points out in his report, the lot itself and the plans themselves, the lot is a compliant lot, even though it was subdivided and wasn't subdivided in half, greatly in excess for combined side yard, greatly in excess of front yard landscaping and total landscaping. Mr. Obelenus has designed the house that's greatly under in overall building coverage, but as the report points out, based upon the quirks of the ordinance with the other house to measure your setbacks, we still need the front yard on Winchester along with the outdoor kitchen. So having said all that, we're going again. Two variances tonight and Mr. DiLannardo is going to comply with everything else. I ask John Obelenus, please to be sworn, and upon having him sworn in, I would ask Mr. Patterson to be accepted as an expert in the field of architecture. So John, Mr. Patterson is going to swear you in, please.
John, just your name and address for the record, please.
John Obelenus, 102 South 8th Street, Violent, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I will.
Thanks.
We accept his qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. All right, Officer Obelenus, obviously, we were at the board on our Zoom meeting last month. We tabled the application at Mr. DiLannardo's direction. Tried to make some changes to the plan that would be a little bit more in line with what the city wanted to see on this lot. So if you could, John, we never had a chance to do this last month. Walk us through the design, obviously pointing out the variances we're seeking, but more importantly, pointing out how this project meets or exceeds all the other qualifications of Margate zoning code in this zone and how you designed the house to try to fit in as well as you could.
Thank you. Basically, it's a two-and-a-half-story residential structure with parking below to allow for all the landscape amenities, the pool, landscaping, the front yard, the stairs approaching the house, and then from the garage up, there's a main living floor, no den or bedroom, it's all living and kitchen and dining with a laundry area and powder room, and again, access stairs to the ground and above. Bedroom start at the second level, which is the master bedroom. Two other bedrooms and bathrooms and up to the third floor, again, two bedrooms with a shared bathroom and stair access in the back. That's basically the plan. A five-bedroom home, parking for four cars and a pool amenity at the back.
Okay, and as we had pointed out earlier, initially the pool amenity had a vertical structure, albeit low to the ground, which Margate has a prohibition on because the pool itself was not full three feet from that vertical structure. That, on whatever plan ultimately gets submitted, will be removed, correct?
Correct.
And there was a fence to make the backyard a little bigger because we're tight and spaciousier that was closer to Winchester Avenue, shown on your plan. That will also be aligned with the house, correct?
So that's, I have a quick question about that. I assume we're going to bring it back to the seven-foot setback, which is the line with the building?
It'll be lined up with the building per Mr. McCarnan's direction.
Okay. We can do that.
Okay. So let's talk about the front yard setback on Winchester and explain if you could how we reach that line because we have one house next door that kind of binds us, which skews the front yard setback, unfortunately, to require us to be further back.
Well, again, this, I've faced this before in other projects where we had just one house to measure against and their setbacks vary extremely and sometimes not so extreme. And, you know, the default setback is 5 feet normally if there's no house there, but we thought that a good compromise would be between the 5-foot default setback and some number in between. And we established the seven-foot setback as something that we thought was reasonable to work with.
So now, notwithstanding the fact that the other house next door, which is the only house we can measure from, it's fairly substantially back, 5 foot would be the minimum. You and Mr. DiLannardo designed the house. We still push the house back a little further so there's light air and open space and access along Winchester to people walking by.
Yes, yes, that's basically it.
And in your professional opinion, as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, do you see any harm associated with the setback?
No, I don't because if you also look, it's not just the setback from the property line itself, but it's the setback from the curb. You know, you have, I believe it's a 12-foot, you know, 10- and 12-foot sidewalk with the, with the government strip. The property line is 7 feet further in from that curb. So I believe that we have a lot of, sort of a visual corridor between the neighbors and up and down the street. We still allow for that.
And to the extent there could possibly be some negative associated with the setback line, would the positives in your design greatly outweigh any such negative?
I believe so. We still allow for that, again, you know, right near, across Winchester and views. And we're not blocking the views per se, so I believe it's a respectable setback.
Okay, and you also designed an outdoor kitchen to be a structure, whether we're going to say it's attached or not, there is a structure which is attached to the house to some extent, which has a setback variance necessary as well, correct?
Yeah, and I believe the attachment, again, it's a kitchen with cabinets, refrigerator, you know, a sink. Obviously, it's going to be hooked in with perhaps an electrical line and a plumbing line. Those are the physical connections. And other than that, it's separate, you know, other than the utility connections themselves. So it's something that, you know, it's a lightweight addition, but nevertheless, it is considered an extension of the house.
And that extension is because there will be lines from the house running to the outdoor kitchen, but there's no physical construction that attaches the outdoor kitchen to the house itself, correct?
Correct, correct. We're not, we're not talking about the foundation, there's no foundation there. We're not using wood studs, you know, it's basically the kitchen cabinets themselves and like I said, either an outdoor barbecue set and a refrigerator, all not physically connected to the house.
But notwithstanding that, we still have, again, an item within Margate zoning code that requires us to seek a variance. If that had met the requirement of the setbacks, it would be 8 feet, we're seeking that to be 4 feet. Is there any negative, once again, as a licensed architect, that you could see associated with the outdoor kitchen placed in the location as you've designed?
Well, we provided the 4-foot separation, obviously, is fire access to the back. We're not blocking any access from that personnel. It's low, it's low to the ground, it's 3 feet off the ground, so it's not blocking any views visually. It's next to the HVAC units, which are obviously much higher than a kitchen itself. So it's a, it's a low structure. It allows for passage to the backyard. I don't think there's any detriment to the, to the code relative to that.
And to the extent there could possibly be some detriment associated with a nice signed outdoor being positive of, of design greatly outweighed.
I believe so, yes.
Eric, you're coming and going with your, the sound.
I am?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything you can do, I just couldn't hear what you just said.
Is that any better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure what that was, maybe a quirk in the computer. So in any event, Mr. Obelenus is certainly going to stick on the call to answer questions the board may have, but based upon removing the other two variances and John having satisfied Roger's request for further information about the third floor and how it was being designed and in conjunction with all of the other requirements of the zoning code being met or exceeded and in the case of building coverage being greatly under, we believe that we would rest temporarily, obviously having the, reserve the right to continue to the extent the board or member of the public has any questions.
John, this is Roger, I have a question for you on the outdoor kitchen. The configuration of the outdoor kitchen, so how do you, I presume that's going to be used from the backyard? So you walk on pavers, then you walk on grass, then you walk on pavers to use it. Is that the intent of that configuration?
I'm sorry, I can't hear half the words.
The outdoor barbecue, the outdoor kitchen, the current configuration, I presume that's going to be accessed from the rear yard or the, the side yard that's going to be used as a rear yard where the pool is.
Yes, yes.
So you have to get into the kitchen by walking on grass? Is that, is that going to be the configuration? You're going to add pavers? How are you going to handle that?
Well, it's, it's a good question you asked. You know, I worked with my client, who's also a landscape, a landscape company, and this is the direction he gave me to, to work with, with that site. And he wanted the pavers in that specific area. Whether you walk around that island through grass, maybe I can defer to him where I got direction from. Other than that, I don't have a clear answer on that.
Well, you have, you have almost 400 square feet of extra landscape coverage to work with, but I just want to point that out to the board. And I just want you to, if that's your intent, I want to see it on the revised plans. So when I do the, when I do the other inspection, I do the final inspection and there's a change, I just want to be able to say, yeah, the change meets the intent.
Correct, correct. We can, we can certainly entertain that, you know, walk around.
All right, fair enough. I just wanted to point that out and let's handle that now instead of at the last minute. And as far as the seven-foot setback goes, along Winchester Avenue, a lot of the setbacks have been around 5 feet. When I talked to Dave, I said, try to get, they were going to see 5, or 5 feet. I suggested, no, they, they should try to get something more than that, and that's where they came up with the 7. And plus, it is true that the right-of-way line is actually further back from the sidewalk than, than is typical. So that, that front yard looks bigger than it actually really is.
Well, I have a question. This is Craig Pomisano. To Eric, I guess it's Eric. The property, the division of, dividing up of the property as 160, if you would have taken 53 feet for each lot, we'd be here asking for a 1-foot variance which would fly right through. The, you know, the cost for 11 feet, you want 7 feet. The old property sat at 11 feet also, as, as does the house next to it. So they reported 11 feet. I just, I just want to know why the property wasn't divided up to 53 feet each. Any comment on that?
No.
You don't know, it was just divided up 50 foot on the corner lot and 56 on the inside lot.
That's correct.
Craig, I think an answer to that might be that, this is Roger.
Yeah.
I think an answer to that might be is, they did that to match the, the lots behind it on Sumner Avenue.
Yeah, I can see that on the, on the block plans. But if you go to the next block and the next block over, they're all over the place at the, at the rear property lines. They don't have to line up on the rear property. And right down the street, right down the street by Ventnor Avenue, they don't line up, you know. So that's not a big, that's not a big issue. Doesn't have to be 50, 50-foot lining up with the one on the next block. I don't think so. Maybe the other board members feel differently. Okay.
Look, the reality, the subdivision has been recorded. It's been recorded in fashion, designing the lots the way that Mr. DiLannardo had directed them to be designed. This is a billable lot of record, as is the one next door. So we're not going back to re, let the wheel on the subdivision. We're seeking these two variances following a fair design process where, you know, it had been whittled down quite a bit over time and this is what we're left.
I don't think Mr. Pomisano is saying anything was illegal. I mean, it's a, it's a byright subdivision, it absolutely meets it. But if you knew what was going to be built here and know what's going to be built on the inside lot, I mean, that was your own decision. So, I mean, nobody's saying he didn't have a right to do that, but you.
No, we're not speaking as a hardship, as Roger pointed out. This is not a hardship which we claim existed. You know, the, the sizes of the lots presently are created by Mr. DiLannardo's professionals. This is the, the design of the house based upon what, you know, as Roger pointed out, many of those homes are 5 feet from the property line. We just happen to have one next door that's 7. So yes, obviously dividing up lots differently would have led to a different result on the application network going forward tonight, but.
That's your choice, that's, that's your choice, nobody's arguing that, so.
I have a question for John again, if I may. Mike Cristaldi?
Go ahead, Mike.
John, did you, did you get your computer fixed? You don't have a 5 pitch roof again, John?
I disagree with.
You disagree? You're a 9-foot span, you're 3.5 rise, which is 41 inches. Your computer doesn't get it. You need 45 inches. I know I'm picking little things out, but it's a, they're getting ugly.
Is that, well, let me just say, on, on the computer, working with the computer, which I had to learn from my employees. which I had to learn from my employees and stuff. It's a five and 12 pitch at the shallow part of the, of the gambol. This is a gambol-style roof. We have a five and 12 pitch at the very top. And then it angles down-
You want to draw a line along your 512 pitch and see your 512 pitch up top and see how they match up?
Well, if you look at those triangles, that's exactly what the roof pitch is. The triangles show five and 12.
Bring that line up to that and see what you get.
I did that. That's how this was-
It goes for about four inches.
Well, regarding what the plans show, the plans may show that it's 512. But if the measurements don't support that, then it's not 512.
We can submit that whatever it gets built here will be 512, no matter what.
Got it.
So Mr. McLaren and Mr. Gallantino are going to have to sign off on a zoning set and construction set. They will be 512 pitch roofs. We're not seeking anything but that. Thank you.
Eric, can I just say this? It really has nothing to do with you, but I can tell you of four houses now that have been built with less than a 512 pitch, with us showing a 512 pitch on there. So you're saying that you're willing to fix it if it's less than 512 when it's built?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, you or this builder, that was just a-
Gallantino here.
Go ahead, Jim.
Eric, I want a certification on the roof by survey. And it's 512. Thank you. Take a part of the conditions.
Anything else on the board? Okay, I'm going to open to public comment if anyone's here for the public. That has anything you'd say, please let me know. And you will be recognized. Public portion is closed. Anything else on the board? Leo, would you read the motion?
Yes, and Roger, with the fence coming back to seven feet even with the building, does that eliminate that variance or is it still technically? I, I, I know we all understand it's going to be even with the building at seven feet, but-
The way I can look at, the way I would look at it is say they didn't have a fence right now and they built the building at seven-feet setback. Later, they had a defense a year later. It would comply.
As long as it's understood it's going to be even with the house, I think we're fine. So the, someone needs to make a motion. It's a C variance motion for the following. It's two variances. There's a front yard setback to the building along Winchester Avenue of seven feet, where 11.3 feet is required. A side yard setback to the structure, which is really just to the outdoor kitchen, of four feet or eight feet is required. The fence will be at seven feet along Winchester, even with the house. The pool, pool clearance variance is going away. The conditions I noted were that the applicant will comply with the street tree ordinance with the required number of street trees in the governor's strip. The roof pitch will be at 512 as required and will submit a, a service, a survey showing that the applicant will submit revised plans consistent with the approval granted and then any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report and any other representations made on behalf of the applicant during the course of the hearing. And then, and there's also, there's also that one checklist waiver noted in Roger's report.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Richard Patterson?
Well, when we have a, as, as Mr. Goldstein pointed out, this is a valid lot. In cases where we don't have lots that are big enough, we always ask the applicant, have you tried to talk to the neighbors and get some extra feet? Have you tried to do anything to right this issue? But this is a, a billable lot, so we don't have that issue here. Other than the applicant chose to make a 50-foot lot on the corner and then build a house that didn't meet the setback requirements. I have to vote no on this application.
Michael Cristaldi?
I'm in agreement that you got a 50-foot lot. It's a canvas that you sized and then came in for variances. I have to vote no.
Jim Gallantino?
I agree with Rich. I mean, and Mike, he created his own hardship and proved that the hardship that he's trying to get granted weighs enough to get a condition for approval. I vote no.
Craig Pomassano?
Well, that was my point when I, when I stated it. They could have made it 53 feet. Could have given the corner lot 54 feet. And the one next to it, 52 feet, for whatever, with the same house right there on that corner property, which corner properties we know are hard to make, to make work. So I have to vote no also.
Remy Pelosi?
For the reasons stated by the other board members, I'm going to concur with them. Vote no.
Joseph D. Geralamo?
For the stated reasons of the other board members, I agree and vote no.
Michael Richmond?
I know it's a corner lot, but it is a big lot. And like the other board member said, when the subdivision came about, it could have been done so that the house could be built without a variance. So I'm going to have to vote no.
The application fails with zero votes in favor and seven opposed.
Next case is Robert and Ellen Matalman, 100 North Madison Avenue, Lot 330, Lot 42, located in the MF District, seeking a C variance relief for front yard setbacks, front yard landscaping, and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and work payments inherent and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McCall?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. This report is based on the application of Robert and Ellen Matalman, 100 North Madison Avenue, Lot 330, Lot 42. It's in the MF Zone. It's a hardship variance again, and it is a corner lot and it's also substantial benefit variance. Background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of City of Morgate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling within the MF Zone on a corner lot. The property is subject to two separate prevailing front yard setbacks to comply with and inherently creates somewhat of a hardship. The applicant is seeking variances for front yard setbacks and front yard landscaping. I'd also like to point out that the lot is large enough to support two units, but he's, he chose to develop a single-family home on it. So Page 2 is the zoning chart for the MF Zone. Again, since we changed the ordinance, the zoning analysis is much more clean and easier to follow. Document reviewed on Page 3, including the floor plans and the architectural plans developed by Robert Lollio, Architect. And the variances are required as follows. Front yard setback to the porch on Madison Avenue, whereas the prevailing front yard setback is 17.45 feet and 8.33 feet is proposed. Front yard setback to the second-floor deck, same thing. Prevaling front yard setback is 17.45 feet and 8.33 feet is proposed. Front yard setback to the building, Madison Avenue, whereas the prevailing front yard setback is 24.65 feet and 15.33 feet is proposed. Inherently, the front yard landscape along Madison Avenue requires a variance for the minimum front yard landscaping coverage is 60%. You get a credit for the steps, but that only takes you to 56.75%. And they have 54.2% is, as proposed, requiring a variance. Waivers requested are 1A, copy of an area map showing all lots within 200 feet. 1D, copy of subdivision site plan or conditional use applications where applicable. Both those waivers could be granted without any detriment to the application or the testimony. The commentary follows. The area is within the MF zoning district and since the zoning ordinance has been revised, reflect MF zoning standards apply. The minimum front yard setback for the second-floor porch, for the front porch and the second-floor deck are less than a prevailing and variances are required. The minimum front yard setback for the front wall of the house are less than the prevailing and variances are required. The reduction of the front yard setback will not have any effect to the prevailing setback within the next 200 feet as there's only one other property that is affected. Again, a grass governor's strip is required. Minimum public sidewalk width is five feet. Traffic on Madison Avenue travels one way from Mammoth to Winchester Avenue, so there is a stop sign on this property. The front yard landscaping, the total landscaping requirements are met in general and overall, except the very restricted front yard landscaping along Madison Avenue requires a variance. However, if a variance for front yard setbacks is granted, the front yard landscaping in theory is being met. A wraparound porch and deck is encouraged on a Winchester Avenue front to look more like a front yard as the planning board typically requests on these corner lots that come in front of the board. And through the zoning process, we'd like the two front yards to look like front yards for the buildings. There is adequate room for both lot coverage and setbacks to provide this without any additional variances. Again, it's a, it's a design request. I don't know how the board feels, but I think you would feel similarly. The lot is relatively low and lies within a flood-prone area based on the topography presented. It is suggested to raise the lot to elevation six to reduce tidal flooding effects and nuisance flooding that occurs daily. Measures measures would be required to not permit drainage on the neighbor's property, which would lower, be lower if this lot is filled against some type of structure. A lot grading plan would be required. The garage below the building at current elevation is complies with BFE plus three, meaning that even without taking advantage of the nine-foot that we give them to put parking underneath, they had that anyway. That means the garage, the, the land is so low there, they can do either one. Recommendations, again, the C1 and C2 criteria need to be met and presented to satisfy the board in the criteria. Grass governor's strip is required. Four street trees are required for a corner lot. London plane tree is recommended or similar. No tree shall block or impede the view of a stop sign. No tree shall interfere with underground utilities either. Street trees may be permitted behind the sidewalk if the governor's strip is less than 24 inches or low hanging utility wires are overhead. Again, if the lot is filled, a grading plan is required. That concludes my report at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Goldstein? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicants, Robert and Ellen Matalman. As Mr. McLaren points out, a couple of things of substantial note with this application. First of all, it is a single-family house being proposed in the multifamily zone. This lot is big enough to house two separate housing units, which Matalmans chose not to do. They would prefer to build one for themselves. But if they wanted to build a duplex here, they could do it by right as they only need 4,400 square feet and they have 5,000. So immediately right off the bat, we're lessening the density in this zone, which as you all know is quite dense. Equally important, maybe the most important thing about this application, and we talk about applications maxing out in coverage. The coverage here, I haven't seen this in a long time, is less than half of what they could build on the lot. So being considerate of their neighbors, Matalmans could have gone bigger on coverage. They are at 22%. Defy anyone to look at the last application when the coverage was half of what it could have been. But we do need some variances because the quirk in the ordinance is such that, again, the setbacks would require this house, and I'll get to this with Mr. Lollio in a minute, to be kind of a boxcar in a corner of the property, which clearly is not a better design alternative. So when we talk about what we're looking for here, the setbacks on the single-family house, if they complied, would be 17 feet off of Madison and they would be creating the house in the back wheel corner of the property, which just, it just doesn't make any sense. We're okay with our building and coverage on Winchester. So what we'd like to do is bring the house out further towards Madison, both the porch and the house. We're obviously, as Roger points out, slightly under on landscape coverage, but everything else comply. Or again, exceeds to a substantial amount. Having said that as an introduction, I see Mr. Lollio is on. I'm going to ask him to unmute himself and be sworn in. And once again, I ask him to be accepted as an expert in the field of architecture.
Sure. And Mr. Lollio, just your name and address. I'll get you sworn in.
It's Robert Lollio, 219 Bellevue Avenue, Hamilton, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
We know Mr. Lollio. We accept his credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Bob, you heard me give my introduction a little bit and, you know, just want to walk through, if you could, what you've been tasked to do by Matalmans and how you designed this house on the, the variances based upon the setback and the averages, which would cause you to design a house that would be slightly, maybe significant, less than what should be built and what could be built. Because obviously a house can be built here without a variance, but the house is a problem to build with these variances. We would call it a better design alternative. So if you would, walk us through what you've designed and how this sits on the law.
Okay, so the design is approximately a 2,750 square foot, about two-and-a-half-story dwelling over parking. The first living is, the first level above parking is considered the main living level. It has the kitchen, the dining room, living room, powder room. The second floor houses two bedrooms with a shared bath and then one primary suite with a deck off the Madison side. And then the third floor consists of two bedrooms and one bath. So the total is a five-bedroom, three-and-a-half bath, or three-and-a-half baths. And again, it was approximately 2,750 square feet. The, the variances we're requesting are the front yard setback to the porch on Madison and the front yard setback to the second-floor deck on Madison and then the front yard setback to the building on Madison. As we mentioned, the average front yard setback required would be 17.5, 17.45 feet. And we are requesting the building to be at 15.33 feet. And the average porch required would be, I'm sorry, the average porch is 17.45 and we're proposing 8.33. And the average, the average building came out to be, I believe it was 26 and change, and we're asking for 15.33 feet.
Now, if you have planned this house, with the setbacks as required in Morgate's story, what would it look like?
So being on the corner lot with the average setbacks, we were left with about a 17-foot wide house by 66 feet long. So it would be a long, narrow house. And, you know, as we said, we're, we're proposing a single-family as opposed to complexes. So it would be like, almost like, like you said, a boxcar effect. Almost a row-long, skinny, rowhouse-type project.
We've seen these boxcar houses that have to get designed for the ordinance that end up getting variances. But in this case, 18 by 66 would be a fairly narrow, fairly long boxcar, correct?
Correct.
And you walked through the variances as to what we have requested the board to approve. In your professional opinion as a licensed architect, do you see any detriment based upon what could be built thereby right versus what you designed in the board granting these variances for Matalmans to build a much more aesthetically pleasing house?
No, I don't see any detriment.
And to the extent that there could be a detriment if a member of the board or a member of the public believed the detriment could exist, do the benefits of this design greatly outweigh any possible, the benefits outweigh, greatly outweigh any possible detriment?
I believe so.
Then talk about coverage a little bit. I find that to be, on the order of magnitude of importance, you designed a house that is less than half of what you could have designed by law coverage, correct?
Correct.
And notwithstanding the fact that you're over on your landscaped area or slightly under on front yard, even with the porch deduct based on the configuration of the house, correct?
Correct. The total landscaping required is 35%. We're at 45%, so we have a 10% plate.
But slightly under still with regard to the front yard landscape area?
Correct.
The fact that we're over on, overall landscaping, would you say that the front yard landscaping variance has any detriment associated with it or is it all positive?
I believe it's all positive.
Mr. Chairman, we would deserve the right to put Mr. Lollio on for a little more testimony, but we do realize the board has a long agenda this evening. This is the type of case-
I have some questions for him, so might as well do that now. Maybe I misunderstood the plans, but it looks like you have no governor's strip. You just have concrete or is- have concrete, or is that, am I reading the plans wrong?
Well, that existing.
Pardon me?
The, the sidewalk was shown, it right now is existing.
Right, so you're going to put in a grass strip then with a new house, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And have you considered Roger's comment number 10 about making the side on Winchester Avenue more presentable as the front of a house?
I, I have taken into consideration, I could discuss that with the clients who are on the call.
Could you discuss them privately, or how do you do that?
I'm not sure how we would do that.
You know what, I, I can call, if Mr. Patterson, a very short phone call to the Maddelmans, and I'm going to just mute myself, but I'll, give me a minute, I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Bob, if you would just take that into consideration with the future houses you design on corners?
Yes. I know, it's just, you know, budget plays a role, so I just wanted to speak with, I guess we can get their feedback.
No, no, I understand, I'm just saying keep it in mind in future projects, you do a lot of work here.
Yeah, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, it's Roger. Another suggestion would be to add another street tree on Madison Avenue. It's 100 feet of frontage, and there's only two trees. There's room for another tree.
I think that's something Eric would probably agree to, bring that up to him when he comes back.
Yeah, Mike Rissoli? Just a little comment to you, Rich, that when you have 100-foot going the other way on Madison and in the 50-foot, it's kind of hard to make two front houses, two fronts on that thing. It's, I think you did pretty good on them, it's just a comment.
Wouldn't a wraparound porch help them?
That would work.
I believe a wraparound porch, a wraparound porch would look, would look nice, for sure.
Very nice.
May I speak, are we back on?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, I had an opportunity to speak to the applicant, who has graciously agreed that to the extent the board were to grant the approvals, he would dress up the side so it does not look like a front. We realize that's important to the city, so they have, people want to see one long run of siding and one flat window to the house moving through streets.
I, I mean, I, I, could you say that again, Eric? I again had trouble hearing you.
The applicant and I discussed the fact that the city prefers not to see a long run of plain sliding and a window that doesn't have any relief on the through streets, because it doesn't look presentable based upon the corner where the front of the house would be all dressed up, but the side would be relatively plain. And he agreed to do something on the side with Roger's approval, which would be of, you know, that type of relief, that it would look more like a front.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead, Eric, I interrupted you.
No, I'll have nothing else. I had rested Mr. Chairman, and you asked some questions for Mr. Lolio, so we are okay to, to rest, unless again, members of the public or the board members have questions.
Okay, anything else from the board? I'm going to open it up to public comment now. If anybody's here from the public that would like to speak, please speak up now.
Yeah, hi, this is Gary and Sharon Delson.
At the sweet, sorry, just state, state what's your address?
Okay. We got-
What's your address?
Gary and Sharon Delson, we're residents of 106 North Madison, which is the property next door.
Okay, can you please raise your right hand? Do each swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Okay. So, again, we, we own the condo next door, and I'm treasurer of our condo association. We reviewed the variance and believe it would be an improvement over the residents that is there now, and feel that the overall plan would have a positive impact on the market value of the properties in the area. So we are supportive of the proposal.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, Stephen Hellinger, 110 North Jefferson.
Mr. Hellinger, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to state that, you know, we are residents, local residents, and we are definitely would like to see one house on the lot rather than two. I think it is congested enough, and I think that it would just be much better if we could put one unit. It'll look better and definitely will not create as much traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public portion is closed. Anything else from the board?
I, I think when, when Eric was off, two things, I think when Eric was off, someone, I think Roger recommended an additional street tree along Madison Avenue, so I'm not sure if you heard that comment.
Because it was 100 feet, Eric, would you put three trees on Madison? Thank you.
And then, did we resolve, I, I know he said they're going to do some architectural enhancements, so just to break up the long walls, but Roger's recommendation was like a wraparound porch and deck, is that?
I'm not sure a wraparound porch is going to work.
Okay.
But as Mr. Lolio has stated, and as Mr. Patterson stated to me when we were offline, they will submit to Roger for his approval, so whether it's a wraparound porch, or windows that have greater relief coming out, or siding that doesn't just have a straight flat run, we'll submit that to the city to review before it's approved.
Okay, got you. Okay, so the, someone needs to make a motion for C variance relief for the following C variances, a front yard setback to the porch along Madison of 8.33 feet, or 17.45 feet is required. Front yard setback to the deck, second floor deck along Madison, same 8.33 feet, or 17.45 feet is required. Front yard setback to the building along Madison of 15.33 feet, or 24.65 feet is required. A front yard landscaping variance of 54.2% or 56.75% is required with steps and 60% without steps. There's a few waiver, checklist submission waivers noted, and Mr. McLaren's report will include those. And as conditions on note, the applicant will add a third street tree along the Madison Avenue frontage. The applicant will provide architectural enhancements to break up any long walls to be submitted and approved in the discretion of Mr. McLaren, and then any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed, and any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Joe.
Richard Patterson?
This is a good case showing a hardship because of corner setbacks that it's pretty easy to agree to. The hardship would create a boxcar, 17-foot wide house on that lot that could hold two I thank the applicants for putting one house instead of two houses. I thank them for all the landscaping they're putting, and I wholeheartedly approve the application.
Michael Cristaldo?
I agree with the other board member. I think it's, they did a good job on it. I would really love to see the wraparound porch on that. I know people are coming in every month looking for porches, so with that, I'm going to vote yes on it, but give us a shout at that wraparound porch.
Jim Gallantino?
I agree with Rich. It is a definite asset not having two houses and having one house. And thank you for the extra tree, Eric, I appreciate that. I vote yes.
Welcome.
Margaret Gubernalty?
Yes, I think it's a really nice plan, certainly a improvement to what is currently there. We get a flood compliant, beautiful new home, one versus two. The coverage is less, the density is less. Certainly the benefits outweigh the detriments, we got all positive feedback from the neighbors. We don't want any boxcars in Margate, and I approve the application.
Craig Palmisano? Craig Palmisano?
Yes, I agree with Pinky's assessments, and also the setbacks on this property, they match the building right across the street to the south, Winchester Avenue. So I'm fine with that, I approve it. It's going to be a big improvement there. I say yes.
Remy Pelosi?
I agree with the other board members. It looks like a really nice project, and I'm excited to see it. I live down the street. Thank you for keeping it one home, single-family residence, because the parking situation is tough. I look forward to seeing this home. Thank you.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I agree with the other board members. I think the benefits outweigh the detriments, and I'm going to vote yes.
The application passes with seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Next case is Robert and Florence Ackerman.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Kesselman, and I am an associate with the law firm of Hank and Sandman, Pudino, March of Bell. This is a rather straightforward application for a beachfront lot. Yes, sir.
Wait your turn.
We're going to, we're going to go to our, our board planner first, Mr. Kesselman, and then we'll get to you.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. The report is based on the application of Robert and Florence Ackerman.
What's that? This is the application of Robert and Florence Ackerman, 120 South Nassau Avenue, Block 15, Lot 19. Located in the S40 district, seeking C variance relief, elevated rear yard deck, and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. The report is based on the application of Robert and Florence Ackerman, as Karen mentioned, at 120 South Nassau Avenue, Block 15, Lot 19, Zone S40. This is a beachfront property surrounded by two sides by the beach. It's in a FEMA Zone AE elevation 11, based on the effective firm. It's also partially within a coast away zone, which means that the construction requirements are to follow a V-zone construction, which lends towards the variance required. So this is a hardship and substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the City of Margate in order to construct a new beachfront single-family dwelling. During demolition, all fill was removed to remove the concrete from the fill material. They did it off-site. Because the site is partially in a coast away zone, the fill is not permitted to be returned as structural fill. The removal of the fill unwittingly created the hardship variance. The property is situated within the coastal wave zone and is required to follow guidelines for coastal A-zone construction, which is similar to V-zone construction. Therefore, all the structures have to be elevated up. The application also includes a swimming pool that is fully compliant. Section or page two is an abbreviated schedule for S40. I just highlighted the relevant situations or the requirements. All bulk standards are being met except the rear yard deck setback greater than 18 inches from grade. In the City of Margate, if you have a deck higher than 18 inches, you have to meet the building setback. Before the demolition of the, of the project, of the, of the house, that grade, that deck would be compliant, because they remove the fill, it now requires a variance from our zoning ordinance. However, that deck has to be elevated anyway because it's a coast away zone. So the deck height in a side yard on the oceanfront, it's allowed to be at BFE plus 20 inches. Again, where that rear yard deck is going to be located, it also fronts on a bulkhead facing Longport side of the beach. So the, the deck on the ocean side is allowed to be BFE plus 20 inches based on the effective firm which we have approved. And they are proposing to be a BFE plus 20 inches, as is the rear yard deck to match the front yard or side yard deck. So that is the only variance, and it was created because of removal of the fill. They're in a coastal wave zone, they have to build the deck up high to comply with the coastal wave zone standards, but because of our ordinance, they need a variance. And I'm not going to go any further about this. The, the applicant has been very cooperative during the whole time about this, and the professionals, Mark Asher, who I've known a long time, we went back and forth, and we, we agreed that this is the way to go and make this right. And I think the board will see that this is clearly hardship variance, created by nobody's fault other than removal of the fill unwitting, and that's pretty much it.
Mr. Kesselman, it's your turn.
Thank you. And good evening. As I said, my name is Aaron Kesselman, and I am an associate with that law firm of Hank and Sandman, Pudino, March of Bell. And Mr. McLaren said this is a rather straightforward application for a beachfront lot that was recently purchased by Robert and Florence Ackerman. The Ackermans demolished a rather dilapidated home and designed a new home that does not even end up itself requiring a single variance, is totally compliant, but due to FEMA regulations requiring the first floor be elevated, the Ackermans would like to walk out of their first floor onto their deck and pool without having to walk downstairs. There is a special need, as you shall hear, based upon a very unfortunate medical condition that Mrs. Ackerman has, and under, under Margate's ordinances, a yard setback variance is required if a deck exceeds more than 18 inches from the preconstruction grade. And even though, as you'll hear, a portion of the ground be at the same preconstruction grade as is now being sought, not all of it did, and thus the need for the variance. That said, the height of the deck will not exceed the heights of the surrounding bulkhead. So with that short background, I would now like to have Arthur Ponzi explain all the details, the positive effects of the new home in general, and the lack of any negative impacts. Since I know Mr. Ponzi's qualification as a licensed planner are known to the board, I would ask that he be sworn in, so you proceed.
Mr. Ponzi, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, on mute.
I think you're on mute.
I think you're on mute.
There we go. So, Arthur Ponzi, 400, I don't know, New Jersey.
I see you're raising your right hand. You swear in front of testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
So, Art, as the planner, would you please describe the application in detail, including the project and the variance on?
Sure. Thanks, Art. I think Mr. Roger, Mr. McLean's report was exceptional. It's a pretty simple application with the one variance. There's a beautiful new home that the architects have designed. Also designed by special means of the application in this particular case, beautiful oceanfront property. All the requirements are signed and that are completely there, everything fine. With the exception of this deck, if you will, of the back of the house, the back in this case being the westerly or long port side of the house, Nassau Avenue being the front. In that location on the property, the deck is proposed, elevation 12.67 height is permitted by the ordinance. What's not permitted is the setback to the property line, which is the subject of the variance. This is a unique situation, somewhat unique, let's say, to this particular property where historic development condition on the lot had the rear of the property elevated to elevation 12.8, essentially the same elevation that we're talking about today. Now, that elevation extended all the way across the rear of the property. And it's interesting on this block, you go down Nassau Avenue on both sides of the block, essentially every property is developed in the same fashion. It's pretty unique to Margate when you see that. It's not a typical Margate block because of the rise in elevation, which I believe from prior knowledge and other cases I've done in history on the block and in this part of Margate. I think, believe it or not, that dates all the way back to the days when Margate was a sand dune and this particular area happened to be elevated. And through all the years and all the development that's occurred, each one of the homes followed that pattern where the lots rise to the rear significantly in some cases. They're completely different, but very attractively and well done for all the homes on this particular block, this being one of those. So when the Ackermans purchased the property and they decided to go forward with the project, our offices worked on the CAFF application, which we provided to Mr. McCarren. The first thing to do was to demolish the existing home so then a new bulk construction, which our firm had designed, could be constructed. When they demolished the property, the home, in the rear, there was a concrete elevated area, which to separate the concrete from the fill, the contractor's fault or anything like that, just inadvertently, took much of the fill away to his contracted to do. And here we are today saying, oh my goodness, we want to put that back. So technically because of the elevation of the rear deck and the closeness to the property line, the rear property line, we have to seek this variance from the board. So I've looked at all of the other properties. I'm also working through the neighbor to the rear, especially the property to the northerly side, the island cavity side. If you notice, am I able to bring a drawing up or anything like that? Were you able to share anything? The exhibit sort of you have was before.
I believe they're available online. I don't know if I can share them as not being the host.
Okay. All right. Well, anyway, so online, there are a series of photographs, one of which we took coming down Nassau Avenue to show the condition that I just described. One other in particular, the lot itself, was in Mr. McLean's report. It shows the condition post demolition and in the right rear corner of the lot, you can see the elevation, somewhat of the elevation still remaining. And most importantly in that view, you can see the elevation of the house adjoining, which essentially matched that rear elevation. So that's the only variance this application seeks. And again, in looking at the block and in evaluating the potential impact to this, to the neighboring properties with regard to the variance, I personally find that there is no significant impact whatsoever. This is a replacement of a former condition which existed historically for many years and obviously replaced with a brand new, beautiful, well-designed, waterfront home. So looking at the negative criteria, I believe that's fully met. I don't believe there's any impact to the zone plan. I don't believe there's an impact to the ordinance itself nor to the immediate neighbors around this particular property. I think the benefits outweigh the detriments and I believe the C1 and C2 criteria for variance relief are met.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to go over a couple of points. So what was the preconstruction grade?
12.8.
And what will it be after construction?
Let me confirm it. 12.8 and there's a slight slump to it. I believe it is down to 12.3.
Okay.
And afterwards would be 12.67, essentially the same.
And the deck's not going to be higher than the bulkhead and it won't interfere with anyone's views or air?
No, it will not. Bulkhead will be designed at elevation 13, which is required by Margate ordinance. It'll be slightly above the elevation of the deck.
Okay. How many steps or stairs would there have to be if there were no variance granted?
60. The architect's on the front of dropping about 60 to the rear. Would you say eight or nine steps?
We have Mr. McCarren as the architect as well. We can swear him in that whenever or after, after art's testimony.
I think that would be eight or nine steps, I would say, without a doubt.
Okay. So can you just go over again briefly the overall benefits of the plan, including the new home itself as compared to the prior home and then its aesthetics?
Well, the C2 criteria, the betterment of the planning alternative, is as I said, to bring a new home, replacing, you know, to use your words, partially deteriorated or whatever, outdated home, let's call it that. I mean, there's tremendous benefit in that. In addition to the fact that the home meets every requirement in the ordinance. The only question we're here for, the only package we're here for is the elevation of the deck, which in itself replaces the deck that was historically on the property in that application.
Okay. And there'll be, you said this before, but there'll be no negative impact either to the purpose of the zoning ordinances or to the neighborhood?
I do not say that, no.
And therefore the benefits of deviation from sheer compliance with the ordinance would substantially outweigh any detriment?
I think they certainly do.
Okay, well, thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. Ponzi. As I said, the architect, Mr. Asher, is available, as is Mr. Robert Ackerman. Should the board have any questions, rather tell them. If not, we respectfully submit the application to the board and thank you for your time consideration.
Craig Palmisano, I have a question for, right? It's either Art or the architect.
Make it for Art, then we don't have to swear him in.
Okay. Art, the, I'm fine with the level of the deck equal to the house and all that, but the seawall, what height is the seawall to the deck?
The seawall will be slightly above the deck. The deck at 12.67, the seawall at 13.1, by ordinance.
And is there going to be a fence on the seawall?
Oh, yes. Sorry.
I have a problem around the pool because you don't have three feet on that side from the pool edge to the seawall inside edge of the seawall. You only probably have about a foot and a half to the inside edge of the seawall without stepping up on the seawall to get your three feet to the edge of the pool. See what I'm looking about there?
The, Mr. Palmisano, the bulkhead in itself is going to have a width of approximately two feet.
Yes.
So if the gate were to the outside of that and we had about a one foot separation, you'd have at least three feet to the edge of the pool.
We don't have a clear three foot around it now on a level ground.
But how, how high is it, Art? I missed that. One foot?
It's a foot, maybe under a foot.
The deck is 12.67. The bulkhead is 13.
Not half a foot.
It's inches.
It's a half a foot.
And then on top of the bulkhead, there will be the safety rail around the deck, the required rail. I believe that's 42 inches.
Will it be in the center of the bulk, the concrete bulkhead?
It's a timber bulkhead.
Oh, it's a timber bulkhead.
It's a brand new bulkhead we're putting in.
Oh, so the concrete goes away?
Correct.
Hmm. Well, can we somehow make three feet from the edge of the pool to the fence, inside the fence?
It's allowed to be zero foot setback on the bulkhead.
Okay, that answers that.
Anything else on the board?
Is that bayfront also? We could do that, but did we put some pools up to the bulkhead before?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes, it's been in the ordinance for a while.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
So we could put pools up to the bulkhead on the bay and the oceanfront?
Correct.
Where we can't get to that? Okay.
Anyone else on the board? I'd like to open this to the public. If they have any questions, please identify yourself.
Yes, hi. My name is Mark Rubin. I live at 117, 119 South Osborne.
And Mr., can you state your last name again?
Rubin.
Rubin, R-U-B-I-N.
Okay, Mr. Rubin, please raise your right hand. You swear in front of the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, hi. I'd like to state that I am Mr. Ackerman's neighbor. Our backyards butt each other. I am on Osborne Avenue, beachfront. And I have, I'd like to state that I believe this variance should be granted. I have no objection whatsoever. I think in the interest of being neighborly and I understand his wife's physical handicaps, I believe that this variance should be granted.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public? Public portion is closed. Leo, would you read the motion, please?
Sure. It's 1C variance. It's a rear yard setback to the deck of zero feet where 16 feet's technically required because it's above 18 inches from grade. And if there's any conditions in Mr. McCarren's report, they'll be complied with unless otherwise addressed tonight and then any other representations that the applicant made during the course of the hearing.
You get a motion.
Motion.
Someone make a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll also make a motion.
Mike made it. Remy second.
Got it. Richard Patterson.
This is one of those cases where we'd like to apologize to the applicant to have to go through the expense for everything you've had to go through. I know Mr. Ponzi's fees are quite pricey, so. Thank you. You had to come here as a technicality. It's just something we had to do. There's absolutely no detriment to this. You're going back to what it was before. Again, I wholeheartedly vote yes on this application.
Michael Cristaldi.
I would agree with Mr. Patterson. It's a shame I had to come here, but I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with everybody so far. Art would see it and I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalte.
Yes, I agree with the other members of the board. It certainly is a beautiful home. The request is de minimis. There's no negative impacts whatsoever and I vote okay.
Craig Palmisano.
I vote yes.
Remy Pelosi.
I concur with the other board members to approve this application.
Michael Richmond.
I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood. The neighbor doesn't have any problem with it. I'm going to vote yes.
The application passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Next application.
Nice work, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application is Ira and Judy Mendelson, 5 Dolphin Drive, block nine, lot 17, located in the S40 district, seeking sea variance relief for curb cuts and possibly others in order to construct two curb cuts for a new single family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McCarren?
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board Members. The report is based on the application of Ira and Judy Mendelson, 5 Dolphin Drive, block nine, lot 17, within the S40 zone. The FEMA requirements are listed on page one. I'd like to point out they have zoning approval and construction approval to build their house. They are coming in to seek a variance to maintain an existing curb cut on Huntington Avenue. My only concern would be that it was going to be provide a throughway from Dolphin Drive directly to Huntington Avenue and that is not the case. So the background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Margate in order to construct his second curb cut on Huntington Avenue. Again, there is no on-street parking permitted in the summertime on Huntington Avenue. The applicant has approved house plans for the new construction of a single family residence. The property is unique in that it has two front yards opposite of each other unlike a standard lot or a corner lot. The zoning ordinance permits one curb cut or two proposed and requires a variance. They have a waiver request of an area map showing all lots within 200 feet. The document's reviewed on top of page two, section two. So the variances required, there are actually two variances. The second one is curb cut location. Our ordinance says whereas on lots with alternate access, i.e. rear access, meaning Dolphin Drive, driveway shall be located on the rear access area. That ordinance was created to prevent new curb cuts on like say Cedar Grove Avenue when they have rear access in an alleyway in the back. That is not the case here. I'm not going to go on with this, but again, there's two variances, one both related to a curb cut, one is the second curb cut and the other one is a location. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, members of the board. Chris Palenson for the Mendelsons, who are the recent purchasers of 5 Dolphin Drive, block nine, lot 17. They purchased the property from the Rosenbergs who had lived there for quite some time and had that large lot that extended all the way along Huntington Avenue, beachfront to the beach gradually. They bought the, kind of the upland side of that and are building a house on there now. There is an existing curb cut that the Rosenbergs used on Huntington Avenue, which is where they parked primarily because their door was on Huntington. When they purchased the property, they inquired of me if they thought the building would be amenable to allowing that curb cut to stay on Huntington Avenue and to install one on Dolphin Drive as well. I thought that since there is no parking on Huntington Avenue, there's really no benefit in closing it off. Really, it's the opposite. There's benefits to keeping it open because it takes, I mean conceivably it can take, between the two curb cuts can take four, three cars off the street that aren't required to be parked on-site. Because the house the businesses are building occupies three spaces, there'll be a total of six spaces and two separate curb cuts. And so you're taking three, three cars off the street in an area in the summer that could really use it. Like I said, there's no downside, there's no upside to closing it off. It doesn't benefit anybody, doesn't create any parking spaces. What it really does by leaving it open is benefit the neighborhood. Pete did the plan. He can talk about what's there and what's going to be here on Dolphin and then we can discuss the variance Roger pointed out. Peter?
All right, Mr. Weiss, just your name and address for the record.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And please raise your right hand. You swear in front of the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thanks.
Pete, would you be kind enough to, will the board accept Mr. Weiss's qualifications as a licensed architect?
Yes, we accept his qualifications.
Thank you. I have to, Mr. Patterson, have to create a record. I believe there is someone opposing the application, so I just need to dot my i's and cross my p's and t's. Peter, you've read the plan that's been submitted to the board?
Yes.
And you heard my introduction, speaking of the two curb cuts, a new one on Dolphin Drive and allowing Huntington Avenue curb cut to remain. Is that accurate?
Yes.
The curb cut proposed for Dolphin Drive, that will be a conforming curb cut, am I right?
Yes.
And the house that you designed and is currently under construction requires how many parking spaces, please?
Three.
And between the curb cut on Dolphin Drive and the parking provided on that side of the house, which I think is four spaces, and the two spaces that can be accommodated off Huntington, the... the site can accommodate six cars total?
Correct.
Where three are, three are required to be accommodated, is that right?
Yes.
And the two curb cuts, they don't line up with each other, there's no possibility that there would be through access, is there?
No, not short of no driving through the house.
And you're aware that there is no parking on Huntington Avenue beachblock, is that correct?
Yes, I think that's also true for Dolphin in the summer.
So you, you would agree that there's, there's really, there would be no benefit in closing off the Huntington Avenue curb cut? Eliminating?
I would agree with that, yes.
From a, from a municipal land use law perspective and the positive criteria, do you believe in light of the conditions in that area of Margate, that allowing the second curb cut to remain helps to promote the free flow of traffic by getting more cars off the street that might otherwise be circling around looking for parking?
Yes, if they weren't there, then visitors to the Mendelsons who would have to drive up towards Venter Avenue to look for parking, so, yes.
Do you see any negatives, you believe that the variance can be granted without substantially impairing the zone plan, zoning ordinance, without substantially impairing the public?
Yes.
And you heard Mr. McLaren speak to the fact that there are two variances, one for the house that has alternative access and with required to be parking, parking in the rear of the house, as well as the second curb cut?
Yes.
Okay, do you, do you believe that the justification we just spoke about satisfies both of those variances?
Yes, I do.
Anything else to add, Peter?
Um, well, I think the, the rear access, if you will, I mean, you know, really, they're both fronts, so it's a little strange to say one's rear access when it's really a front. But I think that was basically geared towards like Cedar Grove Avenue, places that have easements and alleys behind them as opposed to two street frontages.
So you believe that there's no harm then to that, to that control, to the intent of that really doesn't apply in this instance?
I'm not really sure it does, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, members of the board, that's all the testimony I intend to elicit. The Mendelsons are on by way of audio, if anybody would like to speak to them, otherwise, I rest.
Board members, have any questions? I'm gonna open the public portion, if anyone's here for the public, please identify yourself and be sworn in by Mr. Manos.
I'm here, I'm not sure if you can hear me, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Gray Lequie, I'm in three Dolphin Drive, two doors down, the Mendelsons.
Three, three Dolphin Drive, can you state your name again?
Yes, Gray Lequie.
Okay, and Mr. Lequie, please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Alright, there are currently three parking spaces on Huntington Avenue, and he wants another two on Dolphin Drive, I'm completely against this, this request. The layout has more than, been more than adequate and sufficient for more than sixty years. The Rosenbergs who lived there before had, their parking was only on Huntington Avenue. Dolphin Drive was the, the front of the house, that was their porch, and there was never any parking there. I mean, there was, there was parking, there was no driveway, and they had three cars that fit there. Since the Mendelsons moved in, they've parked three cars off Huntington as well. This house has been halfway built before getting variances or approval. I think it's a point presumptuous, since these meetings or these hearings are merely pro forma, they're all pre-decided. I mean, why, why bother? We've lost one spot already on Dolphin Drive, number ten, the Dolphin Drive, the mansion they're going up there. Six and seven Dolphin, which are now merging, the property was before five and six Dolphin, now he only bought five. Six is available, a lot apparently, and seven will be merged together. We'll probably lose more parking on cul-de-sac with whatever cut-ins they want to do with, what they wanna build. Number five, where they wanna cut in these two driveways on Dolphin Drive, up onto the fire hydrant, which everyone, including their construction workers, park in front of constantly anyway, but still, it will cut out the last open space, it'll be a little bit between their drive, their new driveways, if they get them, and the hydrant, which will take out all the rest of the space on that circle. We'll have virtually no parking left in the circle on Dolphin Drive, this is unnecessary and outrageous. We're, we're losing our access to Huntington Avenue and the beach, we're losing our view, now we're also losing guest parking. I assume that would come with better with reduced our property taxes accordingly. I had fifty people at my wedding last year, which was, we stuff them in our backyard, where are these people gonna park? My family and I have lived on Dolphin Drive for more than fifty-five years, we are the longest residents here and the only year-round residents on the street. You're a race from five Dolphin, it's gonna be now Huntington, South Huntington Avenue address. Ten is gone, six is merging with seven. I, I, I mean, it's just, we're, we're losing the, the complete character of this neighborhood. Taking away more parking from us, from the circle is really unnecessary. They've got three spaces on, on Huntington as it is. You can park on Huntington in the summer, and Dolphin in the summer, after five P.M., which people do. Actually, they do before five P.M., no one really seems to care, the police don't bother with them. But there is parking after five, and Huntington fills up, in fact, they constantly drive down Huntington to put people on it off the beach, taking their chairs to the ramp of the main access in this area, test the library. So I can't see why they would need to have more parking, I mean, they're, they're, they're turning, this house is turning fast toward Dolphin Drive, we don't have the garage, basic houses, we just have a porch. So we're gonna be down to one, two, one is also coming down, we've got five houses being torn down on six lots, we've got four mansions on this, on this cul-de-sac. Absolutely destroying the character of the neighborhood, so I am against it. I know my, the neighbor at number four was also, I don't think she had computer problems or phone problems, she wanted to come and protest, but she's really not, not online, so. I can't speak for her, but she was going to protest, so we.
Did you say there won't be, Mr. Lequie, did you say there'll be no parking on Dolphin, or it'll be very? How much less parking is there gonna be on Dolphin Drive?
There are two spots there now, two and a half with the fire, with the fire hydrant is, we'll lose those two. The only spot that'll be left will be in front of number four, we've got a handicap spot in front of number five, I mean, for number three, which my, for my, my mother was ninety-three. I don't know what's happening with six and seven, I don't know what, I haven't seen the plans yet, but I'm sure they're gonna wanna cut in more, there's one spot, one driveway there which will, this. So it'll be now part of the car in front of number four, you've got, then driveway, her, four's driveway. Now they want two more driveways at five, then the fire hydrant, then I assume there's a driveway in front of seven, but I'm sure they're gonna want more driveways for them, I think they're just, I have no idea what they're doing there, but it's gonna be gone. Then it goes in front of eight, nine, ten is gone because they, they cut that in. That's it, that's the street, very, very, very.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
The rest of the public is either in Philadelphia, Florida, or dead.
Alright, I am, I need time to answer. Alright, public portion is closed.
Mr. Patterson, as Roger, I just want to explain that the owner has zoning and construction permits. He's not building it with variances needed. It was a by right plan, now he's coming in for the variance for the driveway now. So everything he's doing right now, construction-wise, is permitted by right.
Thank you, Mr. Ballon.
Chris, would you address the parking issue on Dolphin from your point of view?
I certainly will, the Mendelsons have a buildable lot, they're building a house on it there. They would be entitled to put a curb cut on Dolphin Drive regardless. If the board requires them to close Huntington Avenue, curb cut's gonna go on Dolphin. That's where they have the more, more parking, that's where they have the four spaces. And they'd have to walk to the front door. So regardless of what happens this evening, Mr. Lequie will be outraged because there will be a curb cut on lot five.
So you would close off Huntington Avenue if it's disallowed?
In all likelihood, yes.
Thank you. Did I close public portion?
You did.
Okay. If there's nothing else on the board, would you read a? Motion, Leo?
Yes, it's a C variance application. There's two C, there's two variances requested. One to, for the number of the curb cuts, there is one along Dolphin and the variance is to allow the eighteen-foot curb cut along Huntington to, to remain, so there would be two curb cuts. And then the location, where lots with alternative access, th, those should be located on the rear access only. So there's a variance from that. And then there is a waiver request, as noted in Mr. McLaren's report from the, an area map showing all properties within two hundred feet. Conditions approval would be anything set forth in Mr. McLaren's report, unless otherwise modified on the record tonight, and then the applicant would comply with any representations it made during the course of the hearing.
May I hear a motion?
Make that motion. I'll second it.
Richard Patterson?
Uh, my first inclination when I, I look at a case like this, I say this is what the, the, the true purpose of the board, when the circumstances of the property don't fit in with the rules that are created. With the two separate streets separated, it's not like Cedar Grove Avenue, it's not like anywhere else in town. And then I hear from the neighbor, and I understand his concerns, I, I, what's happening in his neighborhood is happening all over town. And I would tend to vote no based on that, except that the driveway's going to go in anyway. And I think it is a unique situation, so I don't think that that's a reason to vote no, so I'll, I vote yes on the application.
Michael Cristaldi?
Pete only put a seventeen-foot cut in there, he could've put a twenty-foot cut in there, it would've been another three feet, and closed off the other street, we couldn't do anything about that, that would be right to our ordinance.
He could only put eighteen. Pardon?
He could only put eighteen feet in.
Why? Aren't we allowed twenty-foot cut?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yep.
It's eighteen.
I goofed, I'm sorry. But they would close off Huntington and do that, you know, I don't see the reason for stopping this, I, I vote yes on it.
Jim Gallantino?
Yeah, I, I, I understand Gray Lequie's point, I mean, he's had construction trucks in front of his house for like, a year and a half. I'm trying to help him out with this congestion on the street, and the dirt and everything else that's going on, and I feel that he, he deserved to have a say in this matter, and I kinda understand where he's coming from, but in light of what the, the presentation by Mr. Ballonson, I, I think that the, the merits outweigh the deficit, so I approve this application.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Patterson, it certainly is a unique property. I'm not quite sure there's any that sit on the two streets as that does on the cul-de-sac on Huntington. I understand the neighbor, unfortunately, things do change, times change. I, I grew up in the neighborhood, so I hung out on Dolphin Drive, I understand that. But it's good to take the cars off the street, I believe, versus leaving them on the street, because as you know, if they don't have that Huntington Avenue spots, they're gonna just hang out on Atlantic Avenue. So I approve the application.
Craig Palmisano?
They have twenty, it looks like twenty-nine feet on the, on the front of Dolphin Drive, that's not much. So now they have a seventeen curb, seventeen-foot curb cut into that, which is gonna accommodate four vehicles, which is great, to get four vehicles off the street. The other curb cut on Huntington was there previously. So to me, this is a bonus parking spot for two more cars to get off the street, and I approve this.
Remy Pelosi?
I'm gonna concur with Mark Guber Nolte and approve this.
And Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I agree with Craig, the curb cut's been there, I hear what the neighbor's saying, but if push comes to shove, they're gonna put the curb cut on Dolphin Drive anyway, so I'm gonna approve it.
The application passes with seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next case is Larry Malamet, 421B North Nassau Avenue, block six fourteen, lot six point oh one, located in the S forty district, seeking sea variance relief for third-floor deck and possibly others in order to construct a third-floor deck for a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members, this is another somewhat basic application. It's in regard to the application of Larry and Kathleen Malamet. As Mr. Chairman stated, it's four one, four two one B, North Nassau Avenue. The B is a result of a subdivision years ago, and I think it's twenty sixteen. So there's a four twenty-one A and there's a four twenty-one B. Lots, block six one four, lot six point zero one, zone S forty. Again, I have incomplete, it actually is complete application. And it's not a hardship variance, it is a substantial benefit variance. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling on a property that was subdivided in twenty sixteen. The applicant is seeking a variance for permitting a third-floor deck where third-floor decks are not permitted. The proposed deck is of similar ones approved by the city, and does have a pending zoning ordinance changed to permit the third-floor decks, but the proposed deck would not meet the definition of a third-floor deck, it would still need a variance. Again, the consistency report tonight includes a third-floor deck allowances throughout the city other than where they're already permitted, and that requirement is that the deck has to be in the building envelope. This is not within the building envelope, and thus requires a variance for the location of that third-floor deck, even if they, the ordinance was passed. So they need a variance for a third-floor deck where third-floor decks are not permitted. I'm not gonna go on any further than that, it's pretty self-explanatory. I included the proposed deck ordinance on page three, on item number three, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, Chris Ballenson for the Malamets, who are friends of mine growing up, who are, well, like, they're moving back to Margate after having moved offshore for several years for school with the kids and things like that, but now relocating to Margate year-round, which is nice to see. Roger catches me off guard when he says that this design is not kind of within the roof line. I really thought that was, but I'm gonna let Bob Lolio address that. Bob, you wanna speak to that design and, and your, your intent to meet what the whole ordinance speaks to? Bob Lolio is a project architect and can better address Roger's comment in that regard.
Bob, just since it's a new application, just real quick, your name and address for the record.
Robert Lolio, two nineteen Bellevue Avenue, Hamilton, New Jersey.
Please, please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Bob, let me just direct you real quick.
His qualifications, again, Chris.
Sure, Bob, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And you've appeared before this board and are familiar with Margate's ordinance?
Yes.
And you are aware of the intent to amend the ordinance to include a provision to allow third-floor decks?
Uh, I am fairly aware, yes.
And aware that the design criteria is that they kind of be sheltered within the roof line, which is from the third floor, to, to buffer the neighbors on the sides and in the front? You familiar with that?
Yes.
Could you speak to the board and address your plan and how you believe your plan addresses that criteria?
Well, I have the third-floor deck tucked within the roof line of the porch. Right now, it's within, it's, it's tucked within a roof line of the porch and it, it conforms with the porch setbacks.
Yeah. So you, you have the third floor deck set, on the second floor deck roof. Is that right?
It's, it, well, it's on the third floor tucked within the second floor porch roof.
Right. And so there's a knee wall all, all around it?
Correct. But there, I, I don't know if it goes by, there's a building setback, average building setback and an average porch setback. So is the intent of the new ordinance to be within the building setback or is it?
What, what Mr. McClellan is speaking to is that there's no roof a- above it. There's the, the, uh, there's no eve that it's, it's tucked back into. Um, you do have it tucked into the second floor deck roof, but you don't have anything covering on, on the top.
Correct.
Um, with, with that design having been said, and, and in light of the development in the surrounding this deck, uh, do you see the size of the deck and when occupied, um, causing any detriment to the neighbors or to the properties, um, in the area?
I do not, no. There's no detriment.
What's the size of the deck that is proposed?
It's about, uh, ten by, uh, ten by seven and a half.
And, and ten by seven and a half, what, what kind of porch furniture can you get it, within that space of, of?
Uh, you're pretty much, you're gonna get a, a couple club chairs, like lounge chairs, but nothing, you're not having a table. You're not, you're not eating out.
From the sidewalls of the deck that's proposed, how far is it to each side lot line? In, in other words, what's the, what's the buffer on each side?
You have eight, eight feet, four inches from the side of the building.
And then you have the side yard setback?
Correct.
Okay. So on each side, how, how many feet do you have?
It's another nine and a half feet plus eight feet, four inches. So you're like almost, uh, seventeen, seventeen and a half feet.
Eighteen feet on, on each side from the side lot line?
Correct.
Well, what's, and what is it setback from the front, from the front yard?
Front yards, front yard setback is eleven point five.
And you meet that?
Yes.
Does the roof design allow you to push that in, where it's, where the deck's located, push it in, into the house, so to speak?
Well, that went up.
You'd have to push the wall of that room back?
Correct. And I'm already, uh, you know, the third floor conforms. It's at the fifty percent.
I, I, yeah, I see a gable on the right side, on the, as you look at the plan, on the right side of that third floor deck. Um, does that, uh, additional buffering on, on that side of the deck? Or is it just a perspective of the plan that I'm looking at that's wrong?
That's a, that's a higher ceiling in the porch below and the, it's kind of a tower element. So it kind of forms the wall of the right side of the deck.
And it extends all the way back to the, to the face of the deck, to the face of the house?
Correct.
Okay. So, so if I'm on that deck, just looking outward to my left, is that gable?
Correct.
It's kind of, it's kind of in, encompassed in that, in that area, in that, tucked into that area?
Yes.
Chris, I have a question for Bob. Craig, Craig Palmisano. Bob, um, what we like to see basically is a, a pent roof with, uh, short railings, maybe a foot and a half high railings incorporated into a pent roof. Is there any way they can do anything there like that?
And this is kind of what I, I, I kinda show that I have a porch roof going across the pent, the, there's a pent roof in front of the deck. I have, and then I have a, a lower railing.
Yeah. Yeah. Glass railing. Looks like about two feet of glass?
Yes. It's about a one foot, four inch wall and then a two, like a thirty-inch rail. Two foot.
Well, we have less railing and less glass. It makes it look like it's more built in. That's all I'm saying. But it, it's, it's not bad.
Bob, Bob, was it your intent to, to comply with the proposed ordinance, not, not understanding exactly what it was gonna say?
My intent was to, uh, I'm not sure, I'm still not quite sure, uh, the definition. I, I'm sure, I'm, it's a little unclear right now, but my intent was to encompass it within that porch roof and make it a third floor deck.
I got you.
And it conforms to the front porch building, the front porch setback.
Understood. Um, board members, that's all I have from Bob. I, I can tell you that his directive was to, uh, kind of hide, you know, hide the third floor deck as, as the board has suggested should be done. Um, and I, and I think with the design, he's done that under these circumstances, particularly in light of the fact that the deck is so, is square at the center of the property and setback well from each side lot line. Um, and meets the front yard setback. I don't think there's a chance that it's gonna be detrimental to anybody in the neighborhood, which is really what the, what the intent of the, um, the protection of the book of ordinance is. If, if the board feels otherwise, I'd certainly like to know that.
Mike Cristaldi, a question for Bob?
Yes.
Hey, Bob, I don't, I don't wanna change your architecture, but you're two and twelve going across there with the metal roof on it?
Mm-hmm.
If you brought that up, it would bring your front roof up, the pent roof across the front up and give you what Mr. Palmisano is looking for. Is that possible?
Just steepen the roof a little more?
Yeah.
So you have less, less railing showing?
Yes.
Um, I mean, if the client's okay with it, I'd be okay with it?
I mean, I, I think that's what everybody's looking for when we're talking about these third floor decks, is to be more closed in and not as obvious as of a deck.
So like what you, what you'll see there is just a, 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 the roof pitch coming off in front of that deck would just be steeper?
Yeah, that's all.
Which will create, I guess, make that knee wall, knee wall higher in the front?
Yep. You, you would see less knee wall. The roof would come up higher on the level. Same, same.
And bring that whole front pent up?
Yeah.
Larry, you're, you're not gonna testify. You're gonna answer my question. Are you, are you guys okay with that? Do you understand that?
Yeah.
Just answer my question. Are you, are you okay with that, with just adjusting the front wall to be a little steeper? So it, it?
Well, if, if, if Chris is sort of asking him a question, like if they were in the audience, sort of whispering in his ear, if he, if it's a quick yes or no, then I'm fine with it. Otherwise, we'll get him sworn in.
I should just warn him for that.
Mr. Malamet, just state your name and address for the record. I'll get you sworn in.
Uh, Larry, I'm, um, currently, uh, there's, others in, uh, Little River, New Jersey.
And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Larry, you're a longtime resident of Margate, having moved to Limwood, now moving back to Margate with the kids all taken care of, so to speak?
Yes, sir.
Um, the, the conversation we're having is, is a slight modification of the, the front wall of that third floor deck. So it comes up a little higher towards your waist rather than having railing. Um, the board's really looking to, to, to kind of tuck that in as best as possible. And Board Member Cristaldi's come up with a suggestion that, that he thinks would satisfy that criteria.
So might we say there'll be just less, uh, grass, uh, closed, per se?
And, and less glass and, and more wall. Like if you're standing on the deck, say the wall will come up to your waist rather than your thigh.
So we're sure. And, and, and we'll be okay with that.
And Bob, you, you can, you can handle that?
Yes.
I think we're okay with that then, my board members?
I'm good.
I can't hear you.
I think you're done, Leo.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I, I'm, I forget. Were you done or, or are we still?
I'm done. I just wanted to make sure we could, we could satisfy everybody's concerns.
Okay. Anything else on the board? I'm gonna open it up to public. If anyone's here in the public, please state your name and be sworn in. If you have any questions or comments? Public portion is closed. Leo, would you read a, uh?
Yes, it's a, it's a sea variance mo, someone needs to make a motion for sea variance relief to allow the third floor deck where they're not permitted at this, uh, location. And the conditions will be that the applicant will make that slight modification to the front wall of the deck as agreed to by the applicant and, uh, and as suggested by Mr. Cristaldi with, uh, but Mr. McClellan will verify that that has been, that has been done. And then any other conditions set forth in Mr. McClellan's report. And then any, any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Richard Patterson?
For years and years and years, uh, we haven't allowed third floor decks. And for at least two years, maybe more, we've been trying to work out something to have third floor decks that are tucked into the building structure. Um, this doesn't meet that. And it seems to me what we have here is a, is a, Bob Lolio problem. He, he misunderstood, didn't, um, read the ordinance correctly. So because there was a slip up there, we need to approve this. I, I disagree. I think it's easy enough to design it, um, with what we want. Uh, we've been pretty strict on making them conform with this in every case that's come up. And this one does not meet that. So I don't, kind of fitting that through the, uh, to the owners. So I vote no.
Would, would the board let me carry this application to, to accommodate that redesign, please, before everybody votes?
Uh, Leo, if we can do that, I have no problem. Uh, if they wanna fix this, uh, I have no problem with it. I think that's what should be done, um, without rejecting it, is let Bob, now knowing what the rules are, let him fix it.
Yeah, I mean, well, well.
You may have to come back if that, if that change isn't made. But if the change is made in time, you may not even have to come back.
That's what I was just saying. It might be that, that, look, we can carry it. I, I think, um, but whatever, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with whatever the board wants to do. But if we, if the ordinance gets changed and they comply with it, then, then the issue might go away.
They won't have to come back.
Right. I'd, I'd rather not have a, have a no vote in the event we need to come back and have to deal with race to the cotton, that issue. So.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
That's what you're requesting that I have no problem with it.
Okay. Let's, uh, what do you want to carry it a month and make an announcement that, that the applicant will not need to?
December tenth.
Uh, say, December tenth is our next meeting. So we'll carry this to December tenth, six thirty PM. Applicant won't be required to republish a renotice. Anyone from the audience, which I know there was no one in the public, but to the extent anyone's on and, and, and wants to participate, uh, check the website, call our board administrator to get the, the current login information.
Thanks, Chris. I think this, I think this will benefit your clients. So thank you.
Trying, trying to get there. Um, Larry, you guys, I'll give you, I'll give you a call after the next, after the next batter. I got one more case.
Next case is, am I muted? No, okay. Next case is Mark Green, one sixteen South Canyon Avenue, twelve, lot sixteen, located in the S thirty district, seeking sea variance relief for side yard setback and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McClellan?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. The application of Mark Green, one sixteen South Canyon Avenue, block twelve, lot sixteen, in the S thirty zone. It's in AE elevation eleven, effective firm. Again, this is, is, uh, within the coastal A zone. The entire property is within the coastal A zone. I think the, uh, the, the limo line, which designates the coastal A zone, is in the wrong location, but we have no jurisdiction over that. We have, we, we are gonna comment to FEMA about that on our conference call in a week or so. So anyhow, the background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new beachfront, single-family dwelling. Several variances are required, mainly dealing with side yard setbacks and combined side yard setbacks. In addition, a curb cut width variance is required for a, with exceeding eighteen feet. The property is situated within the coastal A zone and is required to follow the guidelines for coastal A zone construction, which is similar to V zone construction. The application also includes a swimming pool that is fully compliant. This is a hardship variance as well as a substantial benefit variance. And this is a beachfront property. And it seems like every beachfront property is unique in its own special way. Section, or page two is a schedule for zoning as S thirty zone. And again, I have met with the architect and the planner on several occasions with this. And we went over it with the app, the applicant's attorney. And we all agree that where we are is where we are. Page three, the variances required. One is a side yard setback for the minimum, whereas a required minimum side yard setback based on lot frontage is ten feet and eight feet is proposed. Uh, this is a hardship variance and we'll get into that in a moment. Side yard setback for combined side yard setbacks, whereas a required minimum combined side yard setback based on lot width is thirty-seven percent or twenty-two feet. Twenty-two feet is a maximum. And eighteen point zero nine feet is proposed. Driveway curb cut width, whereas the total width permitted is eighteen feet and the proposed total width is twenty-four feet. No waivers have been requested, like comments, or as follows. The hardship portion of the variances are based on a location of the lot and unusual shape or geometry caused by a bissection of the existing seawall. The ordinance defines lot frontage as the distance between two sidelines along the right of way. The right of way of Canyon Avenue extends onto the beach past the seawall, sharing the same lot line. The frontage is actually seventy point one-two feet. However, the distance to the seawall is reduced to fifty-two point eight-six feet. If the, if the distance, if the lot width was the same distance as the seawall, they would be fully compliant for the minimum side yard setback. And the, I believe they would need a variance for the combined side yard. The lot area and landscape coverage does however encompass the entire lot area, including the beach area within the lot lines, and is fully compliant. The driveway width is a direct result of the narrowness of the cartway, which is the paved area and facilitating backing out of the driveway in one direction. The city's bulkhead actually reduces the width of the cartway at the location of this property, meaning that they needed a wider, they're asking for a wider curb cut width to maneuver in and out of the property. Again, the project is located within the coastal A zone and is subject to those standards for construction purposes. There is a bulkhead on the landward side of the property. A lot of the beachfront properties, the bulkhead is at the property line or actually C word of the property line. And it makes the calculations a little bit more simple. The lot coverage and other bulk standards are being met. The applicant shall clarify that all of the decks are within the proper setbacks. That's just a general comment. The limo line again is clearly incorrectly shown on the effective firm. And the practicality should be located at the C word side of the seawall, however, the city is obligated to comply with the effective firm until it is revised. We suggest to the applicant to seek a loma or a letter or map amendment, which would move this line to the seawall and, and get rid of the coastal A zone designation. However, the side yard setbacks are unaffected by the location of the limo line. And that pretty much covers my, uh, comments.
Members of the board, thank you. Chris Ballenzen for, uh, Mark Green, recently purchased Weber Property Beachfront, um, on Canyon Avenue on the wrong side of the street. Small white bungalow house that everybody seems to, everybody's familiar with. Um, the circumstances that bring us before the board was an intent to design a, a home that's fully compliant with the ordinance. But we ran into a problem realizing that number one, the angle of the bulkhead reduces that side yard setback. But more importantly, the lot line extends out onto the beach, making, making an effective lot width, I mean, a literal lot width of seventy feet. At seventy feet, the minimum side yard setback requirement would be ten. So we are charged with a, with a setback in the side yard based upon an area of the lot that we can't use, area lots on the beach. All we are asking to do is have the board consider the upland frontage or the upland lot width at fifty-two feet. And at fifty-two feet- lot width at 52 feet, and at 52 feet, that allows a minimum side yard setback of 8 feet, which we do meet in both side yards, 8 feet on the north side, 10 feet on the south side because of the extension of the lot line out onto the beach, not being able to take advantage of it. Roger explained the curb cut width as well as I could do. It's a function of the Kenyon Avenue becoming more narrow at the top of the street where the bulkhead return is and having the ability to safely access the driveway, regardless really of where you put it on the lot. That doesn't matter. You're going to have the same problem. I'm going to let Art Poncio do most of the talking because you hear the same story from both of us. So Arthur, if you'd like to take over at this point.
Sure.
Will the board accept his credentials once he's sworn, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
And Mr. Poncio, just one more time, your name and address for the record.
Arthur W. Poncio, Jr., 400 North Denver Avenue, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
And I see you're raising your right hand. Do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I certainly do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Art, just let me speak it off. We're asking for three variances. One for a side yard setback on the north side of the house of 8 feet versus 10, which is a minimum mandatory, and that kicks us into a combined side yard of 18 provided versus, I think, 21 required and 19 and change required, and then a curb. Would you assess each of those variances and the reason that we are in that hard position?
It's been said a couple times tonight currently. This is an interesting case, an oddity. Beachfront property where a deeded lot has a frontage of 70.12 feet. You do the math, the 37% of that, to determine your side yard setbacks, and you max it out at 22 feet. Pretty simple. And any lot greater than 60 feet in frontage requires a 10-foot minimum side yard. You would think you could design to those parameters. Here's the oddity. The lot in itself, effectively coming down the street in frontage, is only 52.86 feet measured to the bulkhead. If we were permitted to take the side yard setback average and utilize our entire 70 feet, we had 27 feet of setback. We wouldn't even be here. But you measure the setback, as odd as it sounds, to the bulkhead, but you measure the calculation for the setback requirement to the property line. So we have 17 feet of land. We can't use it. It's beach, but we have to count that for the setback. So then I view this as more a technical type variance. I was requiring cause of hardship. It certainly is that. We don't have 17 feet of land. We have 52.86 feet of land. So let's figure it on that. If we go forward with 52.86 feet of land, the requirement in the ordinance would call for an 8-foot setback on the northerly side. We meet that. The ordinance would then require an 11-foot setback on the ocean side or a minimum of 10 to the bulkhead. We have a minimum of 10 to the bulkhead. We meet the current condition of 10 to the bulkhead. Another oddity is the lot is not rectangular. The lot widens as you move to the west side, so that our setback to the bulkhead would be 10 feet on the easterly corner, let's say the vendor side, and 14 feet on the westerly side. So it's really odd the way the lot is configured and the ordinance is applied. But I think if we look at this as a 52.86-foot lot, which effectively is what it is, we would essentially meet the intent of the ordinance, and we would certainly meet. The one setback that I think is critical would be the 8-foot setback to our neighbor on the northerly side, and we're meeting that without question. There is a third variance and also one that is necessary because of the configuration of the area. At the street end, there is a municipal bulkhead across the ocean side, and that bulkhead returns down the easterly side of the street, across essentially the frontage of our property. Well, when that bulkhead was built, it was built within the cartway of the street, so it has reduced the cartway width from 26 down to approximately 18 feet. Unfortunately, the way this lot is laid out, as Mr. Valentin mentioned, it's on the long side of the street. That bulkhead is directly opposite our property. So when you back out of the lot, you basically have one car length almost exactly to the opposite bulkheads on the curb line. What we would like to do is with the double-wide drive, we have two cars coming out of the driveway. Mr. Patrella has designed that beautiful home, he designed it. We would like to have the opportunity to widen that curb by 6 feet. 3 feet on one edge of an 18-foot drive, 3 feet on the opposite side of an 18-foot drive, which enables a vehicle entering the property to begin to turn and not bump over the curb, have a little bit of leeway there as you turn into the property. Likewise, backing out of the property, you would back toward the ocean, get a little bit of wide there, a little bit of leeway, 3 feet is all we're asking, and then proceed right down the street. Again, somewhat of a hardship or a technical variance, but I think one in this case that's warranted is necessary. And in any wide driveway, I think the intent of the municipality is absolutely well-founded, that you want to minimize these driveways because you maximize possibility of parking on the street, number one. Number two, you minimize the driveway because it's a safer condition for pedestrians walking behind all the cars in every driveway throughout the city. So the 9 feet, the 18, that works very well. In this particular case, why we're asking for this, other than the technical reason I mentioned, was this is a dead-end street. There's no parking on the street. And in addition to that, the access to the beach, unlike most other streets in Margate, the access to the beach is on the easterly side, well away from the area we would be backing in or pulling, nothing out or pulling into this driveway. So I don't see any impediment or negative impact on the pedestrians. I see this as a benefit. It'll reduce turning movements, which I think is always important, to reduce potential for accidents and things of that nature. And I think the request is well-founded and relatively middle. It does provide just that little bit of that additional, if you will, outlay room coming in and out of that driveway. I think it's well-argued. I reviewed that in detail with Mr. Patrella. We try to keep that as minimal as possible, placing vehicle templates on the plan, and a 3 feet works very well. We're not asking for anything more than that. So in summary, the variances for the, the two related variances for the side yard setback, I think extremely justified because of the hardship of the lot size itself and how the ordinance is applied. In the alternative, if the ordinance allowed us to take the full 70 that we owe, we would need a variance. So I think those three things are what we're here for, I think are well-justified. I don't see a negative whatsoever to any neighbor, certainly not the zone plan or the zone ordinance.
Art, two things. The pedestrian activity on Kenyon Avenue to and from the beach is well short of the green property because of the location of the stairs to the beach. It's almost adjacent to the neighboring house, so pedestrians or beachgoers have no reason to walk up to the end of the street where there'd be interference with the backing movements of the cars.
That's absolutely correct.
And with respect to the setback on the beach side of the proposed green home, because of the angle of the bulkhead, the setback does in fact increase as you slide toward Atlantic City, so to speak, and it gets larger.
It goes from 10, yeah, 10 to 14 feet. It's significant, yeah.
So it actually conforms when you get to a certain point down the bulkhead?
If you were to look at an average, the average would conform, yes.
Average is about 12?
12 feet.
On the property side, on the long court side, that does conform, correct, the 14 feet?
Correct.
Yes.
And on the Atlantic City side, there's no one across the street, and the beachfront on the other side. Yeah, basically, they have beachfront on both sides, correct?
On the bulkhead on the Atlantic City side.
Thank you.
And one other point I wanted to just throw into that, in one of the exhibits, you'll notice a dotted line on the drawing, which is the existing drawing. We're also into CAFRA, we're very close to receiving on credit, and in the deliberations with CAFRA, they've asked us to hold, because a legal lot sticks out the way it does, they asked us to match the footprint of the existing building. So that corner, Mr. Chairman, at the Atlantic City corner, matches the existing condition.
I can tell you that Mr. Green has discussed the application with Jeff, I forget his last name, I did his house, next door on Lancaster, next door on the beach on Lancaster, and he has no problem, I couldn't say we said it, but he certainly had no objection to what is proposed. And that's all we have. Mark Patrella is here. If anybody has a question of the architect, I know we've had six cases, and I don't want to burden you any longer than necessary.
Craig Palmisano, I have a question for the architect. Mark?
Mark, it needs to be sworn.
Mark, state your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Patrella, 1020 Atlantic Avenue, Atlantic City, Principal with SOSH Architects.
And I see your right hand is raised. Do you swear? Do you swear? Swear to tell the truth?
Sorry, Mark. No, listen, architect, me, just.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yeah.
We accept his qualifications. He's appeared before us.
Very good.
Yes, Mark. On the blueprint on the first page, you show the deck is an elevation of 10 feet.
That is correct. The pool deck?
The sea, yeah, the pool deck is, so that means the pool is at 10 feet also, correct? The level of the pool?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, and the seawall is 11.4?
Correct.
Can I put something in there? There's a new seawall we are designing, and it will be elevation 13.
It will be elevation 13, so that's 3 feet above. And will there be a fence on it or no fence?
There has to be.
Mark?
There has to be.
Short fence, right, 42 inches you need, right?
Well, the seawall.
But that would be measured from the beach side. Yes, that would be measured from the beach side. I understand that the requirement is at least 4 feet from the outside as far as security. So the beach grade.
The pool's air, it's 5 feet.
5 feet.
5 feet, that's right.
So you have a ledge of 3 feet to get down to the pool. If you're on the seawall, it's a 3-foot drop down to the deck level, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct, right? So there's no access for that whole 12-foot of the pool. On the seawall side, there's no access for anybody to get to it. Correct?
I thought these pools were allowed to be against the bulkhead. Is that?
They are, but I don't like it.
They meet the ordinance, Craig.
I can't see you.
Yes. That is correct. I mean, it is a pretty narrow side yard there, so it was a challenge to get the pool in.
I understand. Yes, it's very difficult. It's tight. But I sort of like, if you're on the seawall, you're stepping down 3 feet to get to the deck level. But Craig, we have no access to that whole side of the pool.
Craig, we can serve ourselves with variances. This is not a variance.
I understand.
Then why are we talking about it?
Okay.
Good point. I like it.
All right.
Mark?
That's all, Rich, that's all I have.
All right. Mark, it's good to see you. We hardly ever get to see you.
He's coming around more. It's because they're all very free.
I have to design a few variances.
Do you design quite a few houses in Margate, your firm?
We do, but we don't. We try to design houses that don't require variances.
That was my, Mark, that was my exact point. I know you design a lot of houses here, and we never see you, and I'd like to congratulate a firm that seems to find, build beautiful houses, and seems to do it without variances except in a case like this. So again, I would like to congratulate you and your entire firm. I wish there were more firms like that. Thank you.
Thank you. And?
Anybody else on the board want to scream? All right, I'm going to open it up to the public. If there's anyone here from the public that has any comments or questions, I would ask you to state your name and be sworn in. Public portion is closed. Leo, would you read a motion, please?
Yes, someone needs to make a motion. It's a sea variance application for the following sea variances. Side yard setback of 8 feet or 10 feet is required. Combined side yard setback of 18.09 feet, where 22 feet is required, and a curb cut width of 24 feet, where 18 feet is the permitted maximum. And there's no waivers, and the conditions will be anything in Mr. McClellan's report, and any representations made by the applicant will be complied with.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Richard Patterson?
Well, again, it's also a pleasure to have Mr. Poncio here. I usually get into him with a little bit on how much he embellishes things, and it's very persuasive, but in this case, my whole argument for this would be repeating what he said. There's really nothing in here that's not caused by a technicality. This is a perfect case for the planning board, a perfect case for us to approve something like this, because the particular situation of this lot could not fit in with what the rules are. That's what we're here for. I see no detriment to this, and I approve the application.
Michael Cristaldi?
Mr. Poncio and Mr. Patterson both said everything I wanted to say, so there's not much I can say other than I approve this application.
Jim Gallantino?
I just want to be clear that the Limwell line has to be established outside the bulkhead line, and somebody's going to have to do the Loma. On that note, I agree with Rich Patterson that the board is here for this exact case. I approve.
Margaret Gubernalty?
I agree with the other board members and believe it's a hardship of the lot size and is a technicality. The curb cut, I think, is well-founded. Anyone going to the beach on that street enters on the opposite side of where that curb cut will be, and I know that it is difficult on that street to make a turnaround when people are parking to unload their chairs or what have you. Interesting case, a good one for us, and I approve it. Thank you.
Craig Palmisano?
Beautiful home. Tried the side yard variances, I have no problem with, but I'm uncomfortable with a few things, and I'm going to say for the curb cut, I vote no.
Remy Pelosi?
For the reasons stated by all the other members besides Craig, I am voting to approve in concurrence with them.
Michael Richmond?
I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood. The only variance were the ones that were stated during the case, and I'm going to vote yes.
The application passes with six in favor and one opposed.
Please, nice to see Mr. Patrella, see Mr. Poncio. Thanks, you guys.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you, Rich.
Very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Mark, I'll try to talk to you tomorrow, honey.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night. All right, if there's anyone from the public, we're going to open this for public participation. Public portion is closed. Roger, would you go into the other business?
Yes, sir. As you are aware, the long-awaited ordinance revisions, even though they're minor in substance, require a master plan consistency report to be approved by the planning board and recommended back to the governing body for adoption. They had this first reading at the last commission meeting, and there is one section that's missing in here, but it's minute, and we have discussed it in public on several times. But I will read the consistency report on the record. Introduction, this is dated October 15, 2020. It's a master plan consistency report in regard to ordinance number 12-2020. Introduction, ordinance 12-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 175 Land Use. Definition, Schedule B1, adding Schedule B5, City of Margate Schedule of Standards 175 Attachment 4, Column 1, was introduced as an amendment to the land use ordinance of the City of Margate, New Jersey, on the first reading. The city clerk has provided a referral that the ordinance has been advertised according to law and shall be scheduled to have a second reading and public hearing on the next available commissioner meeting, November 5, 2020, and adopted. The municipal land use law provides the planning board with 35 days from the referral date to prepare, review, adopt, and transmit their consistency report regarding ordinance 12-20 to the City Board of Commissioners. New Jersey Statute 40, Column 55D-26 describes the planning board's responsibility regarding the master plan consistency review as follows. The planning board shall make and transmit to the governing body within 35 days after referral a report, including identification of any provisions in the proposed development regulation, revision, or amendment, which are inconsistent with the master plan and recommendations concerning these inconsistencies and other matters as the board deems appropriate. The statute requires The statute requires that every zoning ordinance must either be substantially consistent with the land use plan element and the housing plan element of the master plan or designed to effectuate such plan elements. New Jersey State, the NJSA, forty, column fifty-five, D dash sixty-two, A, the master plan referred herein is the City of Margate Master Plan Update, adopted May twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance summary. The primary objective of ordinance number twenty, or twelve dash two thousand twenty, is to add definitions so that terms used in the ordinance, both existing and proposed, have a tangible meaning. The proposed ordinance also adds clarifications to already existing ordinances. The proposed ordinance also now requires street trees to be maintained in perpetu- perpetuity and replace, yeah, that, that word. And replace, I can spell it, I just can't say it. And replace any that are removed within a public right of way or were permitted to be located behind the sidewalk due to an undersized or unusable governor strip. Also added are clarifications on fences crossing driveways with clearly not allowing them to cross with a gate or fence, and thus reduce off-street parking. The ordinance will also permit third-floor decks by definition and requires them to be within the building envelope unless on beachfront or waterfront properties where they will be permitted within the allowable deck setbacks. Also, not included in here, but I, I will add for the final adoption, and again, we can do that because it's not a substantial deviation from the ordinance, and we have discussed it both in the public forum at the planning board and at the commission meeting, is the hot tubs to differentiate between hot tubs and spas that aren't connected to a pool and to have them allowed to be put up against a house on two sides and not require a three-foot separation. And as long as they have a locking lid to them, and they, they can be up against a garage or structure or shed, and they're not classified as a pool. A long-talked-about issue is providing an exact number for front yard setbacks, starting with two prominent streets in Margate City, Ventnor Avenue within the S sixty zone, which is considered the Parkway section, and Quincy Avenue. The intent of schedule B five, which is a whole new schedule, is to expand and get to the point where actual setbacks are known and remove the uncertainty and confusion of when to apply the default minimum of five feet and to stop the always-changing, ever-changing, prevailing front yard setback. Ordinance twelve dash twenty advances the following objectives from the Margate City Master Plan: To review the city's history, document progress towards prior goals and objectives, and develop plans and strategies for how the city can continue to adopt and thrive in the future. Secure, secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural man-made disasters. Provide adequate light, air, and open space. From prior master plans, address concerns about bulk and mass that arose after adoption of the two thousand four plan. Prior planning goals were renewed, revised, and abandoned where appropriate. Upon review of the master plan efforts, it became evident that items that were priorities of, prior plans are no longer concerns, and items that are significant concerns are now not mentioned in, in efforts in any community. However, the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy has shifted the discussion and priorities of many coastal communities. The steps that a coastal community such as Margate must take to ensure its long-term existence has taken for granted until recently. Section four point five point six recommends several changes to the general development regulations. Consistent front yard setbacks that don't rely on changing or varying setbacks, inconsistent measurements and interpretations, and other factors will provide a consistent front yard setback that will provide and help meet the goals of the master plan and the zoning plan. I, personally, I assert, I have carefully reviewed and analyzed ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty and the master plan. Based on this review, it is my professional opinion that ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty is consistent with the Margate City Master Plan and will help strengthen the goals and objectives as described above. Submitted by yours truly, New Jersey licensed engineer and New Jersey licensed planner. Attached to that are the ordinance changes, and I will add the, the pool requirements. There's any open discussion on the ordinance changes?
I got one question. So the decks that are allowed on the beachfront, do they have to be tucked in like, like we've been talking about with the rest, or is that?
No, upon my discussion with our, our subcommittee, including Rich Patterson, we decided that beachfront properties and waterfront properties along the bay, as long as that third-floor deck meets the deck setbacks, they're, they very little affect anybody else except the waterside.
No, I agree with you. Yeah.
Anywhere else, if they have a third-floor deck, it's got to be tucked in the building envelope, not the roof envelope, but the building envelope.
Right.
And that does twofold. One is, it protects the, that third-floor deck hides it. And also, if they want a large deck, they're going to reduce the third-floor area. So it's going to keep those third-floor decks within a, a size that will be palatable to the, to the city.
Okay, good.
I, I approve of everything in here. I, I think it's going to save the board a lot of time. It really clarifies a lot of thing. I, I just want to point out one thing, and I brought it to the commissioners' attention, but they, they feel otherwise. With a tree ordinance, we now require them in perpetuity. They must remain. But it doesn't protect the trees. Everywhere you see with these elms and these maples and these giant trees that are three, four feet across, if they cut down that tree, they're required to replace it with a two-inch, ten-foot tree. So that's really the only, the only problem. So this is not going to prevent the spec builders from doing that. The alternative would be have to get a permit to cut down trees, but the city fathers don't want to do that. So again, I, I approve everything in here. I just wanted to point out that there's no teeth. I don't see any teeth whatsoever in that maintaining the tree canopy. Do we just vote on this, or is there any other discussion, or?
Hey, Rich?
Yes?
Steve Zaki. Yeah, the idea is to try to protect the tree canopy, and I just want to agree with you on that, that we should do something about protecting what existing trees we have because of the substantial benefits that they bring to us.
Well, I presented this to the city fathers, and they said, we'll take it under consideration. So they didn't. So this is what we have. I mean, this isn't what we've been looking for, but this is what we have. I mean, it's a disappointment to me, but I, that, it is what it is. Well, we can still continue to work on it.
That, that's true, Steve. This is, it's Roger. I, I think we have a starting point that we can, I hate to use the pun or the, the term, but we can grow on this. There is a section in the ordinance one seventy-five dash twenty-six which discusses landscaping, and it says, existing large trees more than six-inch caliper shall be saved by not burying the grade around the trees by more than six to twelve inches. So there is some protection. However, it refers to grade changes, not anything else.
Well, my point is if they cut down the tree, the penalty is they have to replace it with a brand-new tree.
Rich, can we possibly?
That's correct. Roger?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's me, Mike.
No, I know, I asked Roger a question. Was that correct? If they cut down a big tree, they, the penalty or the requirement is that they replace it with a two-inch, ten-foot tree? Is that correct?
Yes. They have to maintain any street trees.
Mike?
My, my question is like, if it's in the governor's strip, why can't we require a permit for that? If it's on their lot, I can understand. It's their property. We have, you know, I understand what the, what's staying there.
I brought this up with the city's fathers, and this is what they came back with. It was a public meeting. I, I testified there. They said they'll consider it, and they didn't, so.
Even in the governor's strip?
The thing of it is that this is what we end up with, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Rich, as a point of information, Steve Zaki again. Some of these seminars and projects I've been going to, the average tree takes about thirty years before we really start to get a substantial benefit for it. And so it's the amount, it's the size of the canopy that's important, it's not as much as the amount of trees that we have. It's just, that's just a bit of information I just want to present towards the board, so.
Doesn't even Atlantic City have a tree commission that has to approve trees coming down?
We don't have that.
Steve, doesn't Atlantic City have that? Even Atlantic City have a tree commission? No, I, I understand what's important, and like I said, I raised that issue, so. Is there, I don't know if there's any way the board can say we approve this, but we feel that section two, one seventy-five, twenty-six should have some teeth. Can we do that, Leo? Leo?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Rich, say it again.
I don't remember. We, if we approve this, which I feel we should, is there anything we put in there that we feel that section two, one seventy-five, twenty-six should include some type of permitting because it's the tree canopy that's the matter? It's not the number of trees?